Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, council members, city officials, and also our home audience. We're back on TV tonight. I'd like to welcome you to the December 12th City Council meeting. This evening, we have seven items on our agenda. At this time, if you would, Mr. Fawcett, please continue with your call of numbers.
Patton.
Here.
Prohl.
Here.
Patrick.
Here.
Neal.
Here.
Kearney.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Florina.
Here.
Corcoran.
Here.
Clay.
Here.
Thank you. If we all would, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we have distributed the minutes from the previous meetings for review. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes? Mr. Florina, seconded by Mr. Clay. Roll call on that motion, please.
Patton.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Clay.
Yeah.
Thank you. The minutes have been approved as distributed. We do have a special guest this evening that I'll introduce at this time. Ms. Andrea Waterbury. This is a community project that she's working on with the Cavalier Cadet Corporation. Not Corporation, Corps. Sorry about that. At this time, I'll let her speak.
First and foremost, I want to thank members of council for allowing me to speak, also Mayor Feeney. I am Sergeant Andrea Waterbury. I am currently the Cavalier Cadet Military Instructor at Chillicothe High School. Each of you have received a flyer and also information about our community project. Each year, our cadets do a community project. Last year, they did a project with the Humane Society. And this year, we kind of spiced it up a little bit and did a little bit of what I had done last year, a community project at Tiffin, and we kind of are bringing it to a bigger event. We are hosting a camo out tomorrow at the boys' Chillicothe basketball game against Clinton Mathi. We are asking the community staff and also fans to dress in their best camo gear for our donation. With that being said, all proceeds that we make during that game will go towards care bags for children who've been placed in foster care due to the drug epidemic here in Chillicothe. Currently, we're, you know, law enforcement has been really focused on, you know, drug addiction, getting, you know, the drugs off the street, but there is no care for children who are placed in foster care due to these issues. So therefore, the cadets and I think that we should take care of our own, and this is our way of doing so. So we cordially invite Mayor Feeney and also the city council to join us, we're all night, as a community spirit, you know, part of our way on the high school level and also the lower level, to come for a great call. So thank you so much for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Waterbury. Appreciate you coming in. At this time, we have reports from our committees. Who do you, what reports do we have from our committees? Mr. Florina.
Thank you, President Arnold. Safety Services has four items to discuss today. First, for the business is the third reading of the parking ordinance, authorized modification of meter parking zones, replacement, removal of parking meters, and amend section 353 dot zero two of the codified ordinances. This is the third reading. I believe that the plan is a good plan for residents and business, and I hope for positive consideration from council. Next up would be the first reading of item number three, appropriating the remaining grant funds for the Chillicothe Missport Victim and Witness Advocacy Program for 2015-2016 grant year. It's an annual and normal business, but of course, it's time sensitive, so at the appropriate time, I will ask to waive the three read rule. Next would be item number five, authorizing to direct, authorizing to direct the safety service director to advertise for bids and enter contracts for annual supplies and maintenance and repair of equipment required by the state of Chillicothe, Ohio, fiscal year 2017. So we do not encumber the safety service director. We could just do this as an annual thing as well to authorize and allow him to do so. I will also be asking to waive the three read rule. And sixth on the list is to provide for an agreement between the city and Roscom Commission whereby the city will continue to be eligible for state reimbursement costs incurred in appointing counsel for indigent defendants in criminal cases. Once again, an annual thing necessary for the running business for intent for indigence. And for this reason, I will also ask to waive the three read rule. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Florina. Any other committee reports this evening? Mr. Prohl.
Funds Committee has two items on tonight's agenda. The first reading, number, item number three, first reading ordinance to appropriate the remaining grant funds, well, that's actually, sorry, item number two. It's first reading to appropriate $31,125 for income tax refunds. And so that we can process these at the appropriate time, I will make a motion to waive the three read rule. Also, on tonight's agenda is item number four, which is a first reading, which is an ordinance to make appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Chillicothe during the fiscal year beginning January 1st of 2017. This one, we just received exhibit A, and I would like to make a motion to add exhibit A to that legislation.
I have a motion to add exhibit A to that legislation, seconded by Mr. Patrick. Roll call on that motion, please.
Patton.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Clay.
Yeah.
And exhibit A will go along with that piece of legislation.
I have one other item on my report this evening. That is, under committed legislation, there was a piece of legislation at second reading to amend and adopt rules of council. This was to change the start time of council to seven rather than 7:30, so that we can deal with this item and get it off of our docket for the end of the year. I would like to make a motion to pull this out. This would return its second reading and would not be voted on tonight.
Correct.
But just would like to get that piece of business dealt with one way or the other.
I have a motion to uncommit the adoption of ending the rules of council second. And Ms. Neal, roll call on that motion, please.
Patton.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Clay.
Yeah.
And a motion has been accepted, and as Mr. Prohl said, that will stay at second reading, and we'll move to third reading the next meeting.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Prohl. Any other committee reports? Mr. Patton.
Thank you, President Arnold. Since there's one left, which is number seven, I guess I can talk about that one, don't I? This one's significant. It's work that's going to be done at Woodbridge and Park Street, and if you know that area, the guard rail's bad. I think the road is slipping in. It needs a lot of work. And we want to make sure that Mr. Fawcett's able to get into the country club. But this project's going to cost over $400,000. Two hundred and some thousand has come from a grant, which is a public works grant, and the rest of it's going to be part of the paving money. Mayor, would you like to elaborate on any more of this? There's a lot of work that's going to be done, but it's going to be a really good project.
Sure. So for the past, I'd estimate, ten years at least, we have applied for and received Ohio Public Works Commission grant money. Sometimes we refer to it as issue two money. More often than not, we receive $220,000. It's a grant that projects are selected locally and then go through the Ohio Valley Regional Development Commission for final selection. And so what we've done with the money over the past, what did I say, ten years, is identify relatively small paving projects and just do about $220,000 worth of paving with the grant money. With the paving levy that passed, the street construction levy that passed, that really opened up our opportunity to use that, those grant proceeds in more creative ways, because really, the grant can go for the public works money, can go for a variety of public works. So storm sewer work, road construction work, and other projects like that. And what we did with this project was we sort of patched a variety of things together and ended up with a really neat project. There's significant storm sewer work that needs to be done. The storm sewer goes under Woodbridge. There is safety work to be done, as Councilman Patton mentioned, guard rail there needs work. As many of you know, there's housing at the bottom of that hill. Some of you may see, may encounter people walking or bicycling or even moving in a wheelchair up or down the hill there. So at the end of the day, the project will involve paving, sidewalk, and essentially a new safer route from the top of Woodbridge to the bottom. It is, that's the gist of the project. And one nice thing is that it will happen relatively close to the time of the opening of the new school on that side of town, schools. And along with the other project that we talked about earlier this year, which is sidewalk work on Western Avenue, we're working towards, you know, in one, in a couple of years anyway, accomplishing quite a bit of pedestrian pathway there. And so with this, the OPWC money ends up covering storm sewer work, sidewalks, stuff that we wouldn't be able to pay for out of the paving money, because the paving money is strictly for street construction. But we wouldn't have been able to take advantage of the money to do these types of things in the past. So it's really, in my mind, the best use of a grant like that. We're essentially able to stretch our dollar pretty far. And the way it started was I went to our two engineers and I said, you know, help me think of some of our infrastructure issues that are the most significant. And storm sewer is often an area that we neglect simply because we don't have a dedicated revenue stream for it. And this was, my sentence was barely complete before Richard Johnson, the utilities director, said, "Woodbridge, the storm sewer over there." So it's a good, it's a good project, and it's, I believe, a really excellent use of that money. I'm happy to answer any questions either now or public comment. Yeah.
Is this going to be 2017 or 2018?
It is the, it is likely that the work happens in 17. We have had years in the past where they, so this is the, this is the 2016 application for the 2017 spending year. And I believe with everything, you know, with paving and everything else going on, that it should be in 2017. If there's some scenario that makes more sense for it to happen in 18, I think we have that as an option, but there's every reason to think it would happen. Really is a part of the paving program, probably in the 2017 paving program. Because the other part of it is, that street was already under paving, so whether or not it was on for next year, I'm not certain, but it was something that needed work.
And then the remainder of Western Avenue, that's 2018?
2018, correct. And while we're on that topic, you know, ODOT has a variety of grant money out there. Sometime, some of you may have heard me talk about their program catalog. I think about it kind of like the J.C. Penney catalog when we were kids and just looking at it for Christmas, but there's just a lot of money out there. They knew about those projects we were looking at, specifically Western Avenue, sent me an email a month or so ago and said, "Hey, you should look at a couple of these other projects to either help fund what you're already getting from us," because it's a different, it's two departments in the same building. So we're getting safety money. ODOT has a whole category of safety money. That project is a safety project because of the trouble at that intersection. Then we were able to extend from that safety project the sidewalk. They said, "There's another totally different pocket of money called, it's called the Transportation Alternative Program, TAP." And so that is more specifically for sidewalks. So they said, "You should either apply for this to help fund sidewalks that you're already going to do, or extend the current range, which ends at University and ends at, it goes past Bob Evans, it ends at that first intersection," which I don't, it's either St. Andrews or the next one. So they put us on to that, and I've got a deadline of February 1st for a letter of interest. So it's kind of neat, because ODOT is recognizing our eagerness to tap in, and I think that's the advantage, one of the advantages of having District Nine be right here, is that they see what we're trying to do, and it's also good for them, because they get to fund projects locally too. Any other questions on that?
And I assume that since this is going to be a next year project, that we should go ahead and pass this tonight.
Yeah, I think that ideally, we would pass it tonight. I think at the committee meeting, we didn't, we didn't run into too many questions. It's something that is urgent, because the engineer then takes it down to OVRDC and they put their, you know, they do their funding equations back.
Well, also, the funding's covered on both ends of this, as far as the grant.
Correct, yeah.
And then it's already figured in for the paving, so it's not any additional money that we have to figure into the budget.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, is there any indication on how long the project will take for Woodbridge?
You know, that I'm not sure of. This is a little bit different for us in terms of the scope. Paving projects usually have two contractors, one to do all the paving work, and then somebody comes along a few weeks later in stripes. I'm imagining with this, between storm sewer work, sidewalks, I'm guessing at least three contractors, it'll be a little bit more complicated. Beyond that, I don't have a good grasp. But what I can tell you is that we learned a lot from this year's paving program, and just being aware of where we are, the time of year, that sort of thing. If we're saying this is anticipation of schools opening, we should probably try to finish it well before schools open.
Makes sense. Well, given that that is considered a major route, so to speak, coming
Yes.
that way, yeah.
Okay, at the proper time, I will request to waive the three read rule.
All right, thank you.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. Sounds like a great upgrade and improvement for that area and something looking for the future of the community, I think probably everybody's hand is really, like that. Patton, for sure, absolutely. Any other reports of committees this evening? Not seeing any. We'll move then to reports of officials. Mayor Feeney will back to you again, so.
I'll try to speed up a little bit. Just a comment on item one. I'm in support of this legislation. I think that, really, I enjoyed this process. I think that we got good feedback from, you know, mainly the residents of Fourth Street. I think it's something that those residents have been asking for for a long time. I think this was a thoughtful process. I think it incorporated the Downtown Development Commission well. We went there, spoke to forth on their needs and how it fit in with the overall downtown parking plan. Some of you may know, we, the city had been parking at the municipal pay lot at the corner of Fourth and Paint. City employees are no longer parking in that, and that's reverted to meter parking. Anecdotally speaking, I've been watching that lot, and I would say at best, it's a quarter full on a daily basis. So in terms of the worries that some have expressed, I'd say it was not the majority of views that I heard, but there was a worry that taking away meters on Fourth Street would have a, would have a rough impact downtown. As of right now, as of today at 3 o'clock, there's plenty of parking in that municipal lot, and that's with a new business opening across the street. And so, and I also, you know, the process was, took time. This has gone three readings since, since the committee meetings. I haven't personally heard any comments other than, "When are those meters coming out?" And so I'm in favor of the passage of item one. Just touching on the budget, there was, you know, I originally mentioned my support of a temporary budget. I still personally think that a temporary budget is something that is a worthwhile endeavor. I think it allows you to sort of figure out where you ended a fiscal year and then go forward. That being said, the process to get to the final budget would have been the same either way. We went through, you know, in terms of what the administration, the auditor's office did, although truncated, we, you know, we had our department meetings and that sort of thing. Audra Specknagle did forward around her communication with the auditor of state. I think based on that communication, and I think she can probably fill in the details, but my impression of that communication is that a temporary budget is neither a good nor a bad thing, but if we have, if we are operating under a temporary budget, that the auditor of state would not police us from this precaution if they would otherwise. And so, that being said, with all the work being done anyway for a permanent budget, and like Councilman Patrick mentioned at a committee meeting, we can always come back once we find out where we stand and, you know, resolve the remainder of our business. The ordinance in front of you tonight is as it has been, as a permanent budget. And so with first read tonight, it offers the opportunity for two weeks of constituent conversation, more questions if necessary, more committee meetings. And I think we did have a good week last week. I missed, I think Monday night's committee meetings, but I thought that the safety services was thoughtful and useful. On item five, this is just sort of standard, run-of-the-mill, annual stuff. You will note that it's about a month earlier than it has been or was last year. And I'll warn you, like we've talked about for a couple of years, Jeff and Kathy in my office, I had him sit down and go through probably five, six years of ordinances from last couple of years, but going back to 2007, just looking at what are the beginning of the year ordinances that we need to do. And so you'll be, it'll be a busy first month of the year, stuff that we always seem like we push in May, seasonal paper, all that stuff. We'll be taking care of a lot of that housekeeping in January, so Bruce should get a packet of committee assignment requests, and we'll just, we'll just go through them.
Sounds good.
We're also, we're also making an effort to just create a calendar, so no matter who's in that seat knows, these are your, these are your ordinances.
Sounds great.
And then item seven, I think I probably talked about enough. And then finally, just a couple, wrap up items. The 2016 paving program is complete. We wrapped it up in December, but it is done. It wrapped up with finishing Eighth Street in front of the paper mill and some of the side streets on Bridge Streets. And the Bridge Street side streets were actually part of last year's issue two money, so that's kind of, you know, just a little bit of entrances and exits up of Bridge Street. But by our calculation, between city money, grant money, and state money, ODOT's paving work that was done on Bridge Street, we think that at the end of the day, it'll be over $5 million of the paving done within the city limits in 2016, which is a lot of paving. One or two places, you'll see temporary stripes. The thermoplast just can't go down unless it's 50 degrees and rising, so the thermoplast will go down in the spring, but there should be the temporary lines everywhere and, you know, visible markings and that sort of thing. So, and I just want to thank the public for their patience with us. You know, we worked through Pliley's Lane in particular. We tried to work with the utilities department, because we knew, you know, we're trying to make an effort to coordinate work, but Pliley's Lane was in rough shape for a long time, and I apologize for that. It was worth it, I believe, because instead of closing down at two different times over the course of a year or multiple years, it was done in one fell swoop, but we can always do better. Finally, two more weeks of leaf pickup, the leaf pickup schedule. So this is, this week is if your trash day is Thursday, this is your leaf pickup week, and if your trash day is Friday, next week is your leaf pickup week. That is the end of when the seasonal leaf pickup, you know, that's the end of the seasonal program. That doesn't mean we won't be picking up any more leaves. We've learned from this process, and it seems like this year, we had a late, late fall, literally and figuratively, in terms of the leaves. But we are aware that, you know, at the end of the process, there probably will be some leaves. Seasonal work being what it is, we've lost some of those employees, so the crew is not as many people as it was eight weeks ago. Hardly believe we have done it eight weeks. But, you know, if this, if the season ends in two weeks and we still have leaves, just as we would in any other time, please feel free to call the service department. They'll get you taken care of. That ends my lengthy report.
Thank you, Mayor Feeney, and all good news, we like that. And now our auditor, Ms. Christopher Specknagle.
I'm going to talk about item number four, and that's the budget. I sent out an email earlier today that talked about a discussion I had with the representative from the state auditor's office, and as the mayor stated, the decision to do a temporary budget isn't something that would affect their decision. There's no impact on that. But if we would be released from caution, it wouldn't be until after the budget was made permanent, which wouldn't be until, well, it could be as late as April the 1st. He did mention meeting sometime within the first quarter to talk about the status. Obviously, he's not going to say yes or no, but it does look good. So I am in support of either a temporary budget or a permanent budget. Either way would be good, because as the mayor said, we have done all the work for a full-time or a full-year budget. When you look at the budget that you have today, there are a few changes that will take place. One of them is, there was an ordinance passed in 2015 that committed us to pay to help with construction out near Roosters, where the new hotel is coming in. That amount will be for $42,000, so we'll need to include that into the budget that you don't, that's not currently included. As far as what line, we need to discuss that a little bit further, because the ordinance didn't state which line that that needs to come from. If we can take that from road construction or street construction, or if that needs to come from the general fund, if we can do a little bit of research on that. There are a couple other items. If you look at the capital list that got passed out today, there are three items that will probably be amended. And traffic control signals was left off of there. That will be additional $6,704 worth of equipment and computers. So that'll be in addition. The police, we will need to add $24,000 for computers, which will increase their overall to 192,000. And then the last change is for parks and rec. And I think that they have requested a duplicate amount in there of 74,000. There's a possibility that parks and rec will decrease. Yeah. When I was looking at their couple items, it looked like that was due, but it's all verified that number, but that, that dropped that down by 74,000. Overall, the three changes I just talked about will decrease the original appropriation by about $43,000. Those are our most current figures. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Specknagle. And now a report from our law director, Ms. Rethner.
Thank you, President Arnold. I don't wish to comment on any of the proposed legislation for this evening, but if you want to touch on something that the mayor brought up, and that is about the annual ordinances that we go through, I appreciate the fact that you're looking at those and whatever. And we are actually, and our office are looking at that to see what we can send out reminders for different departments on how to make sure that we don't miss those and have to do emergency legislation to get them passed at the last. at the last minute. We're still working on that. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rufford. The only thing I have this evening, but I have some meeting announcements later. I do want to state that our next meeting is going to be Tuesday, December the 27th, not Monday, December the 26th.
There has to be a motion to that effect.
Okay. We need a motion to that effect. I'm Mrs. Patrick, seconded by Mr. Clay. Please, roll call on that motion to change the meeting date.
Tatman.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
That'll give us an extra day to play with our toys. And that's all that I really have. I know that we'll have Christmas before the next meeting, so I do want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and that's actually the only thing I have in my report. I'll make the, I'll make the meeting dates. I'll announce those later. At this time, we come to our audience participation. We do have a sign-in sheet. I do have a name on the sheet. Just if you aren't on the sheet, it still doesn't mean you can't address council. We just ask you to step up the microphone, give us your name and your address. We do need your address. Council Hall 21 does limit each speaker to five minutes of the presentation, total on 15 minutes per any given subject. When we get close to one minute remaining on, if you're talking, I will wave at you or put my finger up or give you some sort of indication that you're getting close, which should give you enough time to wrap up your presentation. The name that I do have on the sheet here is Ryan Wade. If you'd like to come up, please.
Good evening. My name's Ryan Wade. I'm president of IFF Local 300. I don't think I have any problem keeping it within a five-minute deal. So, I just like to, Friday I was kind of made aware of a letter that had come out and led to the article in paper yesterday, so I just kind of wanted to speak on, to speak to some of the stuff that was in that letter and then also in regards to articles in the paper. Earlier today, I had sent a letter to all council members. I gave you the copy, but along with that letter, I sent some history to you with run volume, personnel history, and then that kind of thing. So, this sheet's a pretty good sheet to kind of show you the trend that has been taking place here in the city. Run volume has been going up. Staffing is slowly trickled down. So, with the passage of the safety levy last year, I think that's a good thing for the city to help get our safety forces going in the right direction. Both departments have a great need for people, and that's something that we want to see keep working towards, getting to that, to that little bit better number staffing in the department. As you can see, the, as you guys, the list here, if you guys get a chance to look at that later, if anybody hasn't, currently we're on pace to, outpace last year by about 450 calls. The heroin epidemic takes a toll on us as well. You know, we respond to the overdoses. A lot of times, it's a two-truck call because the person's not breathing, so that ends up sending one of our ambulances, one of our fire trucks. Anywhere from five to seven people are tied up on that call for however long it takes. A lot of times, if there's advanced level care that needs to take place, the fire truck has to follow the ambulance out to the hospital because one of the members of the fire truck is helping in the back of the ambulance. So, it's, that epidemic, we feel that too in the fire department. That kind of leads to delay response for some of the other calls that take place in the city. Mutual aid, we've had to rely on that quite a bit here in the past few years. Can't always count on mutual aid. Volunteer departments, you know, they don't have a paid crew there, so hopefully, you know, hopefully you get somebody. Sometimes you don't. And if we're not able to get a response from mutual aid, then you're making arguments and getting freed up at the hospital or wherever the case is. One of the biggest delays for us at the hospital is the hospital. You know, several times, we'll stand out there waiting on them to give us a bed. They've got nowhere for us to go. Their bed's a full. They're trying to move somebody else out of another bed, so, you know, this is not just, I mean, that's, that, when we talk about the delay at the hospital, that's what we're running into, is, you know, the emergency room's full too, so we can't just leave people. We can't drop them off and leave, so we gotta wait till we can pass care on and that kind of thing. Kind of leading to that is, we don't have the option to leave a less serious call to go to a more serious call. Once we provide care for that patient, we've got to transfer care to somebody that's higher than us. So, that would be an example of us dropping them, taking them to the hospital. We pass care on to the nurse or the doctors or something like that. Anything other than that chain of events happens, you know, we personally can get sued for abandonment. You know, we lose our jobs, we lose our livelihood just over, over that. So, I want to make sure that, you know, we kind of clear that out too, or clear that up as well. There's always safety issues. That's one of our biggest concerns, is safety. Not only safety for the citizens, but safety for our people too. Couple of years ago, we had a fire ops, which some of you attended. The mayor was there, Mr. Tatman, Mr. Gray. It kind of shows you some of the things that we, that happened on that fire scene. So, it shows you, you know, the most crucial part of those initial minutes of us getting there, figuring out what's going on. Do we have people inside? You know, that kind of thing. So, that's why we need that response there. We need them there early. It doesn't do us a lot of good to wait 20 minutes. By the time we're waiting on our people to get called back in, it's too late. It's, I mean, it's way too late. So, that, like I said, that increases the risk, the safety risk to the citizens and to our people as well. I think that's, the slowed response, I think I got all that stuff. That's our biggest concern, is just, this is a safety issue. With the safety levy, like I said, we're moving in the right direction. We would speak in support of the mayor's recommendation for two for each apartment in the beginning of the 5th of January. We were not saying that that's where we need to be, but we're getting there. So, we're slowly working our way to get our staffing levels up where they need to be. This call volume will show you the decrease in people. I mean, we used to have 13 people a day back in 1988 with half the calls. So, you know, we need to get that going back the right way. So, I'd be welcome to answer any questions or anything you guys have. You all have my email address now and say anything you need to figure anything out with me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wade. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak this evening? You're more than welcome to. Not seen anybody. We, at this time, move on to old business. Does anybody have any old business that they would like to, that they would like to bring up? Yes, Ms. Patrick.
I'd just like to make a comment on the last committee meeting. It was pretty apparent at that meeting that council isn't completely informed, and it's not administration's fault of council. It's just the nature of things. And it became really apparent to me when we were talking about the hiring list for the police departments. So, as a result of the back-and-forth discussions, I would ask that, and the mayor suggested this first, that we have monthly budget meetings, so we have a better handle on the money and what we can do for the safety forces. And also, when the police hiring list is in the process of being created, I would ask that we seriously look at the possibility of maybe adding two more police officers, but it's all dependent on numbers. And I would just like to say, I think we owe it to the citizens to make the city as safe as possible within our budget. It's all within the budget. And one last thing, our nuisance officer for the past, I want to say, I think it's been seven months that we've been doing the record-keeping. He's already visited 700 properties. So, by the time you send out first, second notice, sometimes third and fourth, it's well over 1,000 notices being sent, and that's just what he does, not the nuisance abatement board. We work off what he does. So, that's all I'd have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patrick. Anybody else have any old business they'd like to bring up? Not seen any. I'll ask if the clerk has any petitions or correspondence that you may have received.
Yes, Mr. President. I received a notice from the Ohio Division of Legal Control of the proposed transfer of permit from America's Pizza Company LLC, doing business as Pizza Hut at 860 North Bridge Street, to America's Pizza Company LLC, doing business as Pizza Hut at 163 North Bridge Street. And I was contacted by their legal counsel, who has requested that if council deems it fit to do so, council will waive any objection tonight to this transfer in order that I can have this faxed up to the ODLC, so that they can have this in place before Christmas. They're hoping to be open before Christmas, so if...
You need a motion?
Yeah.
Motion by Mr. Tatman, seconded by Mr.?
John, I'm sorry. What's your address?
Mr. Clay. We're moving in between subway and very quickly.
Where's Mary's point?
So, you have three footlongs.
Yes. When they first opened that strip, it was a clothing store.
We're gonna have three footlongs in a row. Footlong hot dog, footlong pizza, and a footlong sub.
Sub. There you go. Restaurant, would you call it? I guess, yeah. Okay. We have a motion and a second for moving forward. Roll call on that motion. Mr. Clay. Roll call on that motion.
Tatman.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Floraema.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Clay.
Yes.
And that motion has passed. Anything else, Mr. Fawcett?
That concludes what I have.
We've moved into new business. Does anybody have any new business they'd like to bring up this evening?
I don't have any new business, but I think we're going into 2017. I think we had talked briefly about looking at a facility plan, and I'm hoping that we can get that going. And also, I began asking the mayor in reference to the names of the streets that have been already paved, and if we have a list for next year of the streets, I mean, do we have a plan? That's something I'm just asking.
Sure. So, this year, we can get a list to council easily, everything that was done, including the streets, alleys, et cetera. For next year, the process, generally speaking, is the engineering department either goes to their, their list of basically road, quality roads, and how they're graded, updates that list if necessary, and then before a bid packet comes out, we don't release any of the street names in the event that the cost of paving doubles or something like that. So, we put out the bid packet. Once the bid is awarded, then we feel comfortable putting out the list of the streets for that year. And so, like, like the ordinances, we know paving's coming, and so we've got the engineering department working on that diligently already. The bid packet this year will go out. You know, I don't, I don't remember when we started paving this year, but it was, I felt like it was August. We should be wrapping up by August. And so, this year, the goal will be to get that paving started early in the year. So, I would expect as early as January, maybe, we need to have the list of 2017 streets available.
Thank you.
And then, yeah, I, I'll make a mental note to, I'll email around to council and anybody else who wants the list of the streets that have been red.
Be useful.
Length from 2016. I agree on the facilities plan as well.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Kearney. Do you have anything else, Ms. Kearney?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other new business to bring up, anybody? Okay. Not seen any. Committee assignments and meeting dates. We've had primary committee assignments towards the end of the year here. I'll quickly try to go over them. We have a request for review of council members and presidents' terms to possibly change from two years to four years at staggered, at staggered elections. Request for legislation for city to enter into an agreement with the county commissioners for indigent defense. Request for legislation to establish the city of Chillicothe's operating budget for the calendar year 2017. Request for legislation to authorize the safety service director to advertise for bids and to enter into contracts for annual supplies, maintenance, and repair, which is on tonight's agenda. Request for legislation to vacate an alley west of North Bridge Street and north of East Water Street, and then the dedication of a new section of adjoining property per the recommendation of the planning commission. And request for legislation to remove unnecessary appropriations from our books for various funds. The only two meeting announcements that I have been given, Pat, Patrick had forwarded, Ms. Patrick forwarded to me, nuisance abatement will meet Tuesday, December the 13th at 2:30 in the council, or I'm sorry, the conference room across the street in the city building. And I had a note that was given to me today that planning commission meeting for this month had been canceled. Yes?
And I forgot to mention, my last mayor's office hours of the year will be this coming Wednesday. What's it, tomorrow? Tomorrow, Frank Jeff's here. Tomorrow, December 13th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the newly opened Paper City Coffee in their little meeting room. That, that shop is in the Fifth Ward, so technically it's Fifth Ward office hours, but anybody in the city is welcome. So, again, that's tomorrow, December 13th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And that'll be the last one of the year.
Great. Those, I think, have worked out very well. That's nice. Yes. If there's nothing else anybody has to add at this point, we move into legislation. And Mr. Fawcett, whenever you're ready, item number one, please.
Third reading of an ordinance authorizing the modification of metered parking zones, replacement of or removal of parking meters, and amending Section 353.02A of the codified ordinances. Third reading.
Roll, roll call on that ordinance, please.
Tatman.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Floraema.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Clay.
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Roll call on the ordinance, please.
Tatman.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Floraema.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Clay.
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number three.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating $31,125 for income tax refunds and declaring emergency. First reading.
I would like to make a motion to waive the three-read rule.
I have a motion to waive the three-read rule, seconded by Ms. Corcoran. Roll call on that motion, please.
Tatman.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Floraema.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Clay.
Yes.
And that motion has passed. Roll call on the ordinance, please.
Tatman.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Floraema.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Clay.
Yes.
And that motion has passed. Roll call on the ordinance, please.
Tatman.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Floraema.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Clay.
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number four.
First reading of an ordinance to make appropriation for current expenses and First reading of an ordinance to make appropriation for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Chillicothe, state of Ohio, during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2017, and ending December 31, 2017, and declaring emergency. First reading.
Item number five.
First reading of an ordinance authorizing and directing the safety service director to advertise for bids and enter into contracts for annual supplies and maintenance and repair of the equipment required by the city of Chillicothe, Ohio, for fiscal year 2017 and declaring emergency. First reading.
Mr. Florina.
Thank you, President Arnold. As reflected in my report and also supported by the mayor, to further move this in smoothly fashion, I'd make motion to waive the three-read rule.
I have a motion to waive the three-read rule, seconded by Mr. Clay. Roll call on that motion, please.
Tatman.
Yes.
Crowell.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Kearneys.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Florinas.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Clay.
Yes.
Motion has passed. Roll call on the ordinance, please.
Tatman.
Yes.
Crowell.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Clay.
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number six, please.
First reading of an ordinance providing for an agreement between the city of Chillicothe, Ohio, and the Ross County Commissioners, whereby the city of Chillicothe, Ohio will continue to be eligible for state reimbursement of costs incurred in appointing council for indigent criminal defendants and declaring emergency. First reading.
Mr. Florina.
Once again, thank you, Mr. Arnold. I will also request, reflecting my report, that a motion to waive the three-read rule.
I have a motion to waive the three-read rule, seconded by Mrs. Gray. Roll call on that motion, please.
Tatman.
Yes.
Crowell.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Clay.
Yes.
And that motion has passed. Roll call on that ordinance, please.
Tatman.
Yes.
Crowell.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Florina.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Yes.
Clay.
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number seven.
First reading of a resolution of support and agreement to perform work described in the 2017 Ohio Public Works Commission Grant Application, agreeing to be responsible for costs not covered by the grant award and declaring emergency. First reading.
And Mr. Tatman.
Yes, I'd like to request that we waive the three-read rule.
I have a motion to waive the three-read rule, seconded by Ms. Neal. Roll call on that motion, please.
Tatman.
Yes.
Crowell.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Kearneys.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.